So I think we'll get started. It's six o'clock on Monday, July 31st. We are meeting in the basement of the Bretton Public Library. And this is on Zoom. It's being recorded and shown live on local access cable as well as streaming and is being recorded for future showings on local access as well as YouTube. This is a joint meeting with to go over bylaws. So we have some members of the bylaw ad hoc bylaw committee here. Peter Crane and Norm Anderson, not a quorum.
Correct. No quorum. I expected somebody on Zoom. Not happening, I guess.
And Tom unfortunately can't make it from our board tonight. But he said to just go ahead. And if he has any comments or something, we can always come back and revisit or whatever.
Fantastic.
Okay, so we can start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of the world. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Again, I'd just like to try to keep it to about a two hour time limit. Like I said the other night, I think all of our brains turned to mush after a little while. So and that but I would like to have conversation with our board as well as you, Peter, to kind of maybe get some more dates on the calendar. I very much would like to see this board get it before, get these before town meeting. I think we've been doing this kind of iterations a few times with different boards. And if we can make as a, as a board, select board here, the concerted effort to get them to town meeting and at least then that's for the, the body to, to comment and vote on. But I don't think that there's value in continuing to rehash them board after board after board. So that's my hope.
Mine as well. Norm, I think it's yours too, right? I would say it's unanimous decision of the ad hoc bylaw committee who would love to be finished.
You don't need until eight o'clock. Yeah, exactly eight o'clock. That's it.
So I think we left off, Peter, in chapter two, article one, town meetings, the section for town meeting locations.
We did, but before we go there, I just want to go back to the very first comment that I have. The definition of town official, where there's a question of what kind of employee? And answer is it doesn't matter because this is an expansive definition. So even for the public, somebody who does, who is familiar with the ins and outs of, of, of all the laws by saying employee member of a committee elected or appointed, it's expansive. And I think that gets the point across more than us trying to be very particular with the wording of employee.
Right. I think my question was more so, is it worth? Because throughout some bylaws, and I haven't, we haven't talked about them, but they call out town employees not being able to serve or being able to serve or serve ex officio. And what constitutes, not what constitutes a town official? I'm okay with that, but what constitutes a town employee?
Yep, and you're right. And we need to be very clear about that in those places. So let me. Oh, turn it on. Maybe that would help. Come on. Now catch up, as you said, we got all the way through appointed committees. We were into town meeting and we got just beyond spring and fall town meeting. So we ended here. Much of what comes below is new. Pieces of it aren't, but we felt that specificity was better than just leaving it out there. For example, there is a mass general law. I mentioned this last time that says that town meeting shall be held within the geographic limits of the town. We've already had one case where it was a better idea to move it out of town. And I could think of a number of emergent situations that could occur that would want us to knowingly move it out of town. So we have provided, we've given a provision to make that happen. So ordinarily, they're held within geographical limits. However, might be located within the geographic limits of a contiguous municipality. Holden, Hubbardston, Paxton, Princeton. I think those are the, I think those are the four that we could go to. Only under extraordinary circumstances, including the expectation that a number of attendees will exceed the capacity of acceptable town locations. If for some reason we think there are going to be 2,000 people in town who are going to show up, which would be an exceptional town meeting, we have to plan for that. Or, okay, you, we collectively as the town need to plan for that. Finally, town meeting may be located outside the limits only by agreement of the town moderator and a majority of the select board. That's really not written very well because it should be by a body composed of the town moderator and the select board. So it would be a majority of that body. Yes, that means there are six people who can vote and you have a tie. But if it's that close and it becomes a tie, then maybe it wasn't as important to move it out of town.
I think what you're saying is different than what's written here.
That's what I'm saying. I'll reword this one.
So you're, you're proposing that it's a major, a four of those six individuals?
Yes.
And not the moderator plus three sub board members?
Although the way this is written, both ways work because if the town moderator, well, the town moderator could actually, the way it's written, veto the will of the entire select board. It could be five to one. That's a bad way to set up a democratic process. So we'll reword that to say a body composed of. Okay, let me not forget to take a note. Notice, virtually identical to the way it is today. As we posted, again, this is our bylaw. Mass general law says seven days for an annual and 14 for a special. We have 14, our bylaw has, for as long as I know, been 14 days for all town meetings. Posted in five places we included, including the town's website as an except, because the select board has accepted a policy that says the website is an acceptable meeting posting location. Detail, detail. Again, virtually straight out of MGL, but for stressing for the people making the warrant, date, location, start time, and also for elections, the election date and the opening and closing hours. Next section, section six. A quorum is 30, we are proposing moving quorum to 30 people instead of the current 10. It is our belief that there should be members of the public present, not just the select board and the moderator and the town clerk and some members of the finance committee. And you're already at 10.
Is there, how did you come up with 30?
It was pretty much Anita's number. We have not had a problem hitting 30 in a long time, even for specials. This is new. We are explicitly saying this. In fact, came up at a town meeting four ago or so. Town meeting time is our, our rules of procedure, not Robert's. And here's one that, yes, yes.
When you say town meeting time or our rules, where would we find those?
There is a book called Town Meeting Time.
Okay.
Published by, published by the MMA.
Okay.
And there are a few copies throughout town. I think it's out of print now. They're actually by the schedule that the MMA usually keeps there a little overdue for their next edition. Because every edition has scads of information about how the laws and the court cases have changed since the last edition. And that's really useful for everyone to understand what's changed. But I haven't seen a new one yet. I haven't seen an announcement or anything. So I borrowed Anita's copy for about 18 months. This is an unfortunate page break. The town should take no action on any warrant item excepting this petition's proposing the appropriation of money for a capital improvement until the capital improvement planning committee has considered such improvement or 21 days have passed after referral without action of said committee. So this is a little stronger than some of the language that we have today and has an out if CIPC does not meet.
I was just going to say.
Question on the 21, Peter.
Yes.
How did you come up with that?
In truth, I don't remember exactly how I came up with 21 days. It's three weeks.
The reason I ask, I may, currently the CIPC meets once a month. That's 30 days. So we'd have to call an emergency meeting to do this. And I'm trying not to do that, but if we have to, we will. But is it possible to move to 30 days or would that cause a problem?
I, I don't think so. I think that what happens though, if we're not careful, is that the ability of town meeting to take action on, look, if there's something capital that comes up at town meeting and CIPC hadn't considered in advance, more than likely it's an emergent situation. It's, it is a priority for the town. Otherwise, select board would not place the article on the warrant.
I can see that.
So by the, by shortening the time to three weeks, yes, it does cause, more than likely causes an out of cycle meeting. But it reduces the risk of having, of having a condition where the select board, where the meeting is called and they can't take action on a, on a warrant article that has priority to the town.
I mean, that was just kind of a field question.
Nope.
Because if CIPC hasn't approved it, chances nine out of 10, it's not going to be on the warrant. If we haven't sent it through the select board. If we have and it goes on there, then we know it's a good chance it's going to be approved because it's going through the process. So I'm, I'm okay with 21, you know, on that. I'm just saying that, you know? I didn't know where you came up with it.
If I may, I think there's been some instances that I think pretty significant capital improvement needs, capital needs come up as we're getting closer to warrant time. And it's maybe CIPC has just met and, and then, but this has come in between the time that CIPC has met and we're talking and select board is talking about the warrant or something along those. That is a little bit more emergent, that it hasn't had the time to go directly through. So I think it's, I read it to be more in that timeframe when we're, right before we're setting the warrant, the select board's setting the warrant.
Okay, I guess my 15 years in the committee says I've never seen an instance where a week before this happens, CIPC has been rushed into trying to validate large capital improvements to send to an article for the town or whatever. I've never seen that happen. So unless it's a citizen petition.
In fact, there have been conditions where things that should have been sent through CIPC have not been done.
Right.
And now with all the bylaws, we're making it, we're making that provision stronger throughout the bylaws. You'll see another one coming up soon. So we're trying to reinforce the requirement to get before CIPC. But we in our head say, but what if? So if you wanted to be, I have no problem changing it to be, I mean, I would say 28 rather than 30, simply because it's an even four weeks. But I, I have no, we are not tied to 21 days. It's just we're trying to, to make as small as possible that window of opportunity.
This is after the town meeting. We have 21 days.
No, no, you, they, it must have been sent to you 21 days before town meeting for you to consider it. So if you, so if, for example, it were sent seven days before the town meeting, which would be wrong. Let's, okay, the warrant is 14 days. So 14 days before town meeting, something gets sent to you and that isn't enough time to have a meeting. We can't take action on that article, period. If you get pulled in, great. If it was sent to you six weeks before town meeting and for whatever reason, the committee didn't meet, it's effectively constructively approved for purposes of being, of being acted on at town meeting.
The reason I question that is because I have seen one instance in my years where it came to the committee. We looked for more information. It did not come to us, but it ended up on a warrant. One instance I've seen.
Yep, and, and hope, it is my firm hope that that, that it cannot, should not ever go to town meeting warrant without CIPC knowledge and consideration.
Regardless into the future, it doesn't matter. It's.
And this is simply, I say simply, but it's for consideration in their ranking. CIPC then could recommend or not recommend. But if it's, if it's a strong need and CIPC says, well, it doesn't rank, there's other needs, but there's fund, so we're not ranking it as such, but there's funding available outside of town funds to do that, it could still be, CIPC would have already considered it, stated their, their rationale or not. I'm, I guess this is a, some of the great areas.
I don't want to go into how the CIPC does everything, but in the process, 90% of it is information we must gather from the departments or committees that are sending us stuff. Some stuff takes a long time to get because we're looking for quotes. We're looking for bids on stuff that's difficult to get. An example would be, yeah, we want to do this. We got a bid out for a part, but the part's not going to be here. Well, I don't know what the cost of the part is going to be at the end. So how can I, how can we approve something like that? So trying to do the due diligence says, if this is 21 days submitted to us and we still haven't gotten the information and that is not a warrant, it was just a request to us and somebody wants to put her on the warrant, I don't know how that can be done if we haven't recommended based on all the due diligence that we're supposed to do as a capital improvement committee. So that's my concern.
Well, would that come, it, it can't go on the warrant unless the board approves. So we would, would we be asking those same questions? And if we still felt like we didn't have enough?
You, we could, right. What gets sent to the board are CIPC's recommendations. If you find something on there, and this is where we try to work. If you find something on there that is not been recommended, but you think is important, you can come back to CIPC and say, why hasn't this been done? Normally, we try to give you an idea why it hasn't been done. An example might be a street sweeper that we desperately need. And we've looked at it, doesn't rate very high. It's not a grant item. We got to pay for it, but we don't have any money to pay for it. So we normally wouldn't make that a recommendation, but you certainly can come back to CIPC and say, hey, what about this? I mean, we, we see 18 to 20 million dollars of stuff that we're dealing with every year.
And I think the past couple of years, that since I've been on, the past couple of years, we haven't seen anything come through CIPC to the board. And I don't know where that breakdown has happened, that there's been, we haven't gotten any recommendations for, for anything. So I think that there definitely needs to be better communication and improved communication or, or explicit workflow or something. So I, I appreciate what this is trying to do, Peter, but I'm not.
If I may, if you go back through and look at all the recommendations, you'll find every year we've made recommendations to the finance committee and the select board. I don't know where you're getting your information, but it has been. In fact, if you look at last year's, Joe, Joe recommended it. He wrote up it and we sent it to the board and the finance committee. So, so I'm saying, I mean, you can, we're, part of the, what we're tasked with is to look at all the capital and whether or not it can be funded, how it can be funded, and what are the ratings? We've, I mean, there are some things that if it's a safety issue, it's, it's gone. It's recommended because the town needs it as a safety issue. So I mean, I think 21 days works if there's a stipulation that just after 21 days, if we haven't made a recommendation or done anything, doesn't mean it's dead. It means it's still in the process. So are we asking the, the CIPC to say, keep track of the 21 days and say, oh, we haven't made a recommendation, but we're still working on it to keep that from automatically becoming active?
The way I read it is where 21 days have passed after refer, referral without action of the CIPC. So if you've met to discuss it, that's an action in my mind. So if the, the consideration is still that it's under consideration or you're seeking out additional information or whatever, I think that that's an action. I, maybe, I'm not sure I'm reading into the bylaw or not, but I think it could be, could be interpreted that way. I think if it, something came before the CIPC and, and CIPC didn't meet within 21 days, then that's constituately approved. But if you meet and say, we've looked at it, we need additional information or whatever, I think that you make, you've taken an action on it.
At the end of the day, has considered in law usually means has reached a decision about. It's not just has discussed. In law, when you say this group has considered, that means it has thought about, looked at it from all sides it can and come to a decision about that issue.
Again, I guess I come back to read the first, first thing. The town shall take no action on any warrant article. That means a warrant has already gone on the books.
Yeah.
Before town meeting.
Yep.
Proposing the appropriate monies for a capital until the cap has considered such improvement. So no action shall be taken on a warrant article if it hasn't gone through capital improvement. That's the way I'm reading it.
Unless it's been referred 21 days before the town meeting. If it's been referred more than 21 days, then.
Okay.
And the, the CIPC has not reached its decision and it's still allowed to be acted on at town meeting.
Even though we're still working on it.
Yep.
If we haven't reached.
And you give whatever information you have, I would imagine, at town meeting. For I would imagine the town moderator would ask the CIPC's opinion.
Boy, that's a tough one because I feel like you're forcing the CIP to make a decision on something they're not ready to make.
Town meeting's the deadline. Town meeting is always the deadline. At the end of the day, the warrant for the town meeting is set two weeks in advance, period. There are, for all practical purposes, no exception to that. So yes, we're basically forcing you, the CIPC, to come up with a decision by town meeting date. Or if it came in 14 days before town meeting, you don't have to come to the decision, in which case it's not 21 days and it must be passed over with no action. Which by itself can be its own problem if there's an emergent condition that needs to be dealt with and you have to appropriate the money. It might mean we have a special town meeting two weeks later to just deal with that one issue, perhaps. But we can't, in the same way we want CIPC to consider very well all issues before it, we cannot hold up town meeting appropriation forever simply because CIPC hasn't come to a decision. And I don't mean those words lightly or glibly.
So what happens if it comes before and it's approved? Even though it hasn't come to the capital improvement planning committee? And we now have 21 days. Say it comes to us the day before the town meeting and article ends up there. What happens then? Does it, does it automatically go through regardless of what we say?
Absolutely, because the action of the town, the action of town meeting is the will of the town. If the town says we're spending the money no matter what CIPC says, that's the action of the town. If the CIPC says we should not spend this money and the town meeting votes to spend the money, the town is spending the money.
Well, I guess the deep question I have is, if that's the case, what prevents any department or committee from petitioning the select board to put a warrant article on there without going through CIPC?
The board themselves. The board decides what goes on the warrant. The board can be requested and the board can, as it has in the past, say, no.
I remember when I was first on the board, we would meet, we would have joint meetings with CIPC the first couple of years that I was on the board to get a sense of the capital, the capital requests and everything. And then I think through COVID in the past few years, we haven't, the board hasn't met with CIPC at all. And I personally have not seen recommendations coming. It doesn't mean that they haven't gone through the office, but they haven't been disseminated to the entirety of the board. And so I think that that's a commitment that the board has to make. And that's a, a board from year to year because it changes. And also the commitment from CIPC, which is appointed yearly to have that dialogue with, with not just select board, but also FinCom. And that it's really that, that three member. And I think Austin's working on in his, with the budget and every, the budget plan and everything to have a more concerted effort to get CIPC before the, well, in advance, as much as projects can be known in advance and also get all of the projects in front of all, all three of the.
I, I, I think, Austin, you are on as ex officio, non-voting on the committee. So by sitting on there, you'll know how things are going. We can certainly warrant you to prevent any of the problems that we're reading about here. I think that's a pretty simple answer. You?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I think to Lee's point, I mean, I, the proposed calendar and capital process that I have presented to you and will present to the board at the next meeting, ideally finalizes this by January. Definitely 21 days in advance.
A bit more than 21 days, yes.
I recognize that that's a lot, especially for asking a volunteer committee. But to your point, most of the work hopefully is done by town departments to do a lot of this research.
Hopefully.
And in my opinion, it shouldn't come to you if it's an incomplete submission. So certainly, certainly shouldn't go to town meeting with an incomplete submission. So it's kind of on, in my opinion, I think it's on the administrator and, and town departments to do a lot of the legwork to make sure that you, board, finance committee and the voters of town meeting are informed when asking to fund some of these expensive projects.
And again, we're just a, we're a due diligence recommendation committee based on capital assets. So it, that's, there's a lot that can happen in there. But for the most part, you can go one year from a $20,000 recommendation to a $1.5 million recommendation. Okay, so, and one creates a lot more due diligence than the other one does. That's what I'm saying as far as timelines. I, I mean, I'll work with the committee and if we have an issue on it, we'll work with you. But I think as long as we are working on it, some type of action on that, 21 days doesn't mean anything then.
One, the one challenge that we have is candidly, the, the process that I am proposing contemplates the annual town meeting. So for example, special town meeting, it's either kind of funding what the annual couldn't fund and using free cash or some other funding sources. But you know, for example, for this town meeting coming up this year, the special town meeting in the fall, the capital plan likely will not be done. So I think we'll have to come up with essentially probably what the capital planning committee has already done over the past year or so in terms of recommendations.
Well, I think that you and I will see when we meet this Thursday to go over with the committee in terms of how to get this thing done in an efficient way. And you can see what we do and that kind of stuff, yeah.
So I just kind of flagged it as for, we can kind of continue to digest this part. We can, if the board is. We can, if the board is amenable to that, just kind of continue to have that conversation about this part in particular. I know I had flagged some other pieces. You know, I wanted to explore a little bit more of the, the date of town meeting and the election and stuff. So I think we're having good conversation.
I don't want to spend a lot of time on this either. But the other question I have is, accepting citizen petition.
Yep.
Anything, a $20 million school.
Citizens petitions have to be placed as they're written. And technically, they're not even supposed to have legal, we're not supposed to spend any, expend any town funds or resources on citizens petitions. So they're not supposed to have legal review or like a public information sessions or, or anything along those lines. If we receive it, it has to go on, on as written.
I was just questioning, it does say that in CIPC, we can do things, but we're exempted from citizen petitions. But just clarifying.
Yeah, doesn't matter what it is. You're right, the $20 appropriation and that, $27 million appropriation from citizen petition are all treated exactly the same because that's the law.
And that was some of the consideration even for the electronic sign that was originally a citizen's petition. And then it was kind of working with the citizen to say, okay, well, it, it was submitted, so it has to be presented, but can you make recommendation to, to take no action because funding has been secured elsewhere or, or whatever? So some of it is to try to work with, with the submission of that.
So I'm okay with that if you want to move on.
Okay.
Like I said, I still flagged it for continual consideration.
Yep, absolutely. Article shall be acted on upon in order printed in the warrant unless otherwise authorized by majority vote of the body. That's pretty standard stuff. Start at the top, work your way through. You don't get to skip them, you don't take them out of order unless the town body votes to allow that. Section nine is brand new and I cannot tell you how happy I was to see the moderator enforces at the annual town meeting. Every motion shall be presented in writing to the town clerk prior to the vote on such motion. I cannot tell you how many times the town clerk has had to chase down people who made motions who never presented it in writing, even though by law it has to be in writing. What we did here is we said it has to be presented prior to the vote. Which means people who are just thinking on their feet quickly about motions need to also write very quickly.
Yeah.
Small change, no person shall speak for more than five minutes. Used to be 10. In tot, in total, on any motion, all such persons' time has been extended by vote of the body. Current is 10. 10 minutes is a long time. Five minutes is a long time, yes.
And that, when you say in total.
Yep.
That is two minutes on this one, three minutes come back, do something there. That's five minutes.
It's five minutes on one article.
Right.
But, yeah, yes, it could be split up into 12 different times of 30 seconds each.
But it's per article.
It's per article.
Mm-hmm.
Well, actually, it's more than that. It's on any motion. So motions to amend give another five minutes. Each motion to amend is five minutes.
Seen it all.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've seen a lot of people do a lot of work. Yes.
But just, and again, I, I would, well, actually, I do hope we do get here because that would mean very good attendance at town meeting. If there's ever an overflow room, some communities authorize the moderator to appoint or designate an assistant moderator to be able to kind of oversee that overflow room and.
There, there, I believe Randy's already appointed. In fact, he used it at this past town meeting.
Yes.
For, for an issue that could be considered
Yeah.
Under his jurisdiction, so, yes.
Through mass general law or is that contemplated in this?
That's mass general law. We are, we are silent on it specifically. If there were a mod, town moderator by law, I would think it would say that explicitly, but we don't have one and we didn't write one. So speaking specifically to overflow rooms that implies a set of technology that must already be present in order to have an overflow room. Because an overflow room, every person at town meeting must be able to participate. That means to speak and to hear everything. And whether or not that means see is a whole question for the Americans with Disabilities Act, but let's. So were we to anticipate something and have an overflow room, I would imagine cable would be highly involved in making sure that we had sufficient technology so that everybody could hear everything and there would be a way to speak no matter what room you're in. It gets a little trickier when you're talking about coordinating people speaking in multiple rooms. I'm gonna hum into that. There's nothing that's gonna say we can't do it. We absolutely would not prevent it in bylaw. So I think that we, Paul and I have talked about things like this before. We have a couple of, yes, we have wrestled with that exact problem in Glenwood. Where we, we were thinking about some people upstairs, COVID times, people upstairs, people downstairs, how do we get it done? We had ideas for it, it turned out not to be necessary fortunately.
Yep.
Moderator shall appoint a timekeeper. Great, somebody has to keep track of time. This is a new one that we put in because we think it's valuable to the town. People who are not members of the body, this is a registered voters of the town, may be recognized by the moderator with consent of the body to answer questions or present information. How many times have we seen Weston and Sampson stand up and give us a presentation about whatever thing we're talking about? Or for that matter, in truth, our previous DPW chief was not a town resident. Our treasurer collector is not a town resident. These are all fine. It's just that we wanted to put in there a very clear facility to allow it.
I think currently the moderator does say, verbally say if there's no objection.
Yes.
And, yeah.
And, and honestly, that's the best way for us to handle it. I think this just formalizes it in a way that was not in the bylaw before. We also put in this next section, the facility to have a, an explicit facility to have secret ballot. It's always been there. And it, I can think of once in the past 15 years it's been used. But we wanted to, again, make it clear that it's possible and how to make it happen.
I think it's less of an issue now with the electronic clickers.
I believe you're right.
But I think it's still.
I, I, I can honestly say, yes, the clickers really reduce it. But this, I can't say it can't ever be needed, which is the only reason it's still there. And again, we set up the motion made by any member seconded. Oh, all, and this all has to be done before the, the motion is being voted on, the voting has begun. It's got to be all done before that. You know, when Randy says, all, all in favor, press the green button, by that time, it's too late to make the motion. A simple majority of the body and this motion is not debatable, amendable and may not be reconsidered. Directly out of the current bylaw, all committees created by town meeting shall report as directed. And then if somebody doesn't make a report, this is actually half new. Committee can be considered discharged by town committee, by town meeting if they don't, if they've been formed by town meeting, but do not respond to their charge.
Okay, explain discharged.
They are done, they are disbanded, they no longer exist.
Okay.
So I think currently we don't, a lot of our existing boards and commissions were formed by town meeting, but recently I don't think we've had any that have been formed by town meeting.
That is, nothing's been done recently at all. In fact, I'd have to go back through a little more history. So I'm gonna make a statement, I can't actually justify, I don't like doing that. But I don't think we have a single committee that's been formed by town meeting. They've all been formed by the select board or they've been formed by the town meeting adopting a section of MGL, which is not the same thing. Conservation Commission exists because the town accepted Chapter 40, Section 31A, whatever the magic number is. That's not a body of town meeting. That is a body of the town that exists because we adopt the section. When in 1940, the bylaw committee was formed to, to create the body of bylaws that were adopted in 41, that was a body of town meeting because it was voted at the 1940 town meeting. I don't think we have any committees formed by town meeting right now. But it can always happen.
No, I was just gonna say, we have a bylaw for CIPC, which had to go through town meeting.
Yes, but you're still, that doesn't make you a body of town meeting. It's in the same way that accepting a section of MGL does not make Conservation Commission a body of town meeting. You are a body of the town, but not of town meeting. The fact that you were, there are many ways to create a committee. But the creation of the committee, look at it this way, who appoints CIPC?
The board.
The select board does. It's a body of the board. When you create a, a committee, a town meeting, you appoint right then and there the people for the committee, the town body does. No action to dissolve the meeting shall be in order until every article in the warrant has been duly considered and acted upon. For all those people who like to just say, motion to adjourn, it is out of order. But the body may vote to postpone consideration of any article to adjournment of the meeting to a stated time and place.
And that's any article?
Correct. So you could vote any article, any set of articles. I mean, back to Austin's question about last time, you could have set up a two-night meeting, which inherently implicitly moves all of them to the, to the, to the next meeting, next night, next week, whatever it is. I don't know the last time it happened, but no town meeting shall extend beyond midnight without approval of the moderator and a majority of the vote of those present in voting. This is straight out of mass general law. Maybe not the midnight part, but there's always a, the, there's always a time limit, what's the right word when you have to, have to be sent home? The same reason the baseball games have to end by 2:00 AM because that's Boston's. Anyway, curfew, thank you, that's the word I'm looking for. There is an implicit curfew. Ours is just explicitly at midnight. And if the town doesn't approve to extend, town meeting moves exactly one week. Or the remainder of town meeting. Yes, there are two kinds of adjournment. There's the final, I forget what the Latin is for adjournment. That's the absolute final, you're done. That's the one they're talking about here. And to adjourn to the next night is a different adjournment. And that's it for town meetings.
Does this, sorry, for the adjournment piece, if it's not voted to extend, could there, it would be adjourned to one week, time, place, the same?
Yep.
But could there be a motion to adjourn to a date, date and time certain? Otherwise, then the one week?
That would be this.
Peter?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that the committee looked at or thought at one point would be good to put in there, but decided not to?
Honestly, I can't think of anything. I'm gonna look to Norm to see if he remembers anything. We, we did have debate on the things that we added, like secret ballot and change to five minutes. And, I mean, we've done, I honestly, I'm sure, you know.
There must have been.
There must have been something that we said, that we talked about and said, eh, it's not a good idea. You know, it sounded first, sounded like a good idea at first, sounds like, eh, it doesn't hold up.
I was thinking of like, you all agree, this is important, but I don't think it should go here or I don't think it should be on this one. So.
I can't think of anything like that.
No, okay.
All right, let's talk about the select board. What we tried to do, although we're not completely successful, I'm afraid to say, what we tried to put in one bylaw, the answer to the question, what does the select board do? What are their responsibilities, what are their duties? And this is largely correct. And so this is considerably larger than the current one. And we'll talk about why soon enough. But this is, this is the bylaw that dictates what you folk do. Board shall consist of five members elected for staggered three-year terms. Straightforward, that's never been in the bylaw before, it is now. And because this is an elected board, this, we can't take this from the appointed board bylaw. So we had to replicate it here. Terms of members shall be arranged so that as much as practicable, the same number of terms expire each year. Here we go. The board is the chief executive officer of the town with the responsibility for the general direction and management of the property and affairs of the town in all matters not otherwise provided for by law. You're the CEOs collectively. Some of these are also, by the way, MGL, even if we don't have an explicit reference to it, like this next one. The board shall be the agent of the town to institute, prosecute and defend any and all claims, actions and proceedings to which the town is a party or in which the interests of the town are or may be involved. When it comes to lawsuits of any sort, giving or receiving, you are the responsible, responsible party for them.
Here, can I get back to A for a second?
Sure.
What did you find coming across for the general direction and management of the property and affairs of the town? That's a very broad term.
It is, and it's supposed to be because the select board is responsible virtually for everything that happens in the town on behalf of the town, except for things provided to somebody, provisioned to somebody else. At the end of the day, you are where the buck stops.
Okay.
Now, although the town shall be the agent to institute, prosecute and defend, this authority shall not restrict the treasurer collector in the exercise of the powers conferred upon that office by applicable law. Land taking. Land taking does not require select board involvement for most of it. Land taking for lack of payment of taxes more specifically. With regard to lawsuits, no settlement shall be made by a payment of more than $1,000 without authority from town meeting. Okay, there's a little ugly truth here. And the ugly truth is, the interpretation of the Bylaw Committee and Town Council is that this thousand dollars, it's, it's no settlement. That comes from the town coffers in excess of a thousand dollars. If insurance pays it out for $150,000, that's on the insurance company. That does not require town meeting approval, because it doesn't come from the town. But when the town pays directly, there's a limit of a thousand dollars, which by the way, is currently $300 in the bylaw. Now, with insurance, the way we have it set up, the odds of exceeding that are beyond minimal. It's not zero. No probability is ever zero. But it's not likely that we're going, that the town will be responsible for allocating funds for a lawsuit. I should say more specifically for a court action.
So any action by anybody or any entity in town that requires us to settle for more than a thousand dollars in cash needs approval from the town meeting?
Correct.
Was that in the old bylaw?
It was $300 in the current bylaw. I should say is $300 in the current bylaw. Now Leah may remember this whole discussion about what's the right value that we had with a previous iteration of the Select Board. We've been through this with a couple, with a couple town administrators, we've been through this through town council. This seems to be a pretty good value. A thousand dollars seems to be an appropriate value for that. "The board shall have exclusive power to negotiate and enter into contracts, unless the power's been conferred by the, by our general laws and the board shall authorize to delegate such authority as appropriate." Negotiate and enter into contracts. Notice, both of those verbs are there. It is not unusual to delegate that responsibility to the end of the desk. Certainly for negotiation, not all, not always for for entering into the contracts. In fact, I, in this town, it has been very unusual to delegate entering into contracts to the town administrator, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's zero times. It's been minor stuff. But when we do DPW contracts or police contracts, historically, that go, all the negotiation is done through the town administrator with final approval done here.
I like most of the wording, I just don't know what I don't like about the other wording. I mean, the power to delegate, the power to negotiate and all that. I guess I'm having questions about for a town administrator, future twenty years, these bylaws are passed. What obligation does, if we authorize the authority to the town administrator, what authority do we have to require or request him to keep this up to date on these things at, say, executive sessions?
You can make that a condition of delegation. You can say, "We delegate the authority to negotiate the DPW contract for this set of workers to the town administrator with a provision that said administrator will report back monthly." I, I don't know, I'm making it up, obviously.
I'm just curious, okay. All right.
You also have a performance review process.
There, there...
I don't like that, I don't like performance.
There's a whole, there's a whole professional behavior thing.
Bitters don't like them either, they're public.
I like things done right up front, you know what you got, that's it, simple.
Professional behavior of the town administrator and the Select Board is sort of assumed here.
Okay.
Or, for that matter, to whomever you would delegate. Doesn't have to be the town administrator. I don't know, who...
Well, I, so some towns have a, a chief procurement officer that is not the town administrator. So you think about efficiency purposes for entering and negotiating contracts for supplies and services or projects. Having to wait until the next posted meeting could, you know, actually impact that, that contract process as well.
I guess my thought is, if we are responsible for all the affairs of the town, and we're responsible for money, okay, in making sure that the town runs properly, if we enter into a contract without the board knowing all the ifs and ands of it, how well have we done as a board? So that's why I'm looking at delegation as what, what, not a requirement, but more of a, just keep us informed.
Right, and, 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 as I said, I think it makes sense, the, from just a professional point of view, that anyone who has the power to negotiate would keep the Select Board informed to understand what the current status is, where things are looking, project, so that the town, the, the board can plan. I mean, that's part of your deal also. But, as there are many, 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 many affairs of the town, and having the Select Board's fingers in every one of those is frankly too much work and why we have a town administrator, in my opinion. And so there needs to be thoughtful consideration about what to delegate and what not to delegate.
I, I think here in this case, we're looking pretty much into contracts. And negotiate and enter, I think that's, from what I'm getting from this, right, it's really that item that we're looking at.
I mean, I think some of that is the, the board's conversation with whomever they are, are delegating to, as far as if it fits in the budget, have at it. Or, no, we, that that's not in your guidelines. Or, if it's not gonna fit in the budget, then generally there, historically has been conversations as far as, in, in executive session, these are the, this is a challenge or this is not a challenge, or, or whatever. And so I think some of that is, is conversations that the board has with whomever they're delegating. The, the, that, it sounds like the, the biggest question mark is, is the contract piece. I'm assuming towards employment?
Well, Justin brought, Austin brought up a good point. That, at some point, you're negotiating people's lives, and you don't wanna make it in open court. So if you have issues, you have concerns, it should be done in an executive session. That's what they're for, you're negotiating a contract. So that was part of that concern there, is like, keeping informed, but without throwing it, throwing somebody under the bus. You know what I'm saying? That's kind of what that is. So if we can solve that, when a, when a contract comes up simply by delegating somebody on that particular contract, then we can solve the problem. It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Having been directly involved in negotiating three contracts with Charter, Spectrum, whoever you wanna call it now, I have been the responsible party and report to the Select Board on occasion. But, you know, basically the actual contract negotiation, the wording, and everything else is done by the committee, approved by town council, and then turned over to the board. Now, that was all prior to a town administrator as well. So in other words, you know, okay, the rules of the game may have changed a little bit, but nevertheless, um, we still had the direct responsibility for doing that.
Yep.
And I think there is value to having the continuity of, of an administrator or, or designee that kind of has some of the history there, whereas the board fluctuates. And I think in the past, um, some board members kind of pre-town administrator would sit on union contract negotiations, but then you kind of lost some of that history between, this is what was coming from the previous negotiations and everything. So I think there is some value, I, I think there's a lot of value to having the continuity of, of someone that, that, that knows the field as to what's going on, not just in town, but elsewhere.
Personally, I don't wanna micromanage on a contract, but I want Cliff Notes of what's going on. I mean, I think we have a right to that. That's all I'm saying.
And I think we, in, historically in the past, for contracts, we have had an, an executive session because most of the time the con, the, um, for employee contracts, they are ratified by the Select Board, so we've had executive session and...
Right, but that's usually only been at the end, from what I saw.
It's changed, yes. It's, it, I think different town administrators have taken more liberties than others.
And I'm sure different boards have changed things since too.
I think especially for collective bargaining purposes, you know, generally what is common is, for example, we're currently negotiating with our dispatchers. We met with the previous board, asking for general direction of where the board was looking to go. And the negotiations are kind of going through within the parameters established by that board. But it's also consistent with other collective bargaining agreements that are set in town, right? We have to be fair. And then to your point, yes, uh, they're presented at the end. However, if there is substantial challenge that comes up during the negotiations, that's also an appropriate time to come to the board. But of course, you know, to your point, I mean, every, uh, communities do it differently. You know, you could go, it's, you know, kind of poll the five surrounding towns and ask them how they do it, and they'll all do it, you know, very differently, so...
I mean, Peter's done a lot of work on this, and I guess my thought is, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel again. I don't want the next board to reinvent the wheel, or the next TA. We have a set of rules we go by, and we know what we're doing. That's what I said, you know, just negotiate. I don't want, I'd like Cliff Notes, you know? A, B, and C, that's it, what's going on? That's kind of all. And do that in an executive session.
Well, if, if the contract, so are you asking for Cliff Notes after the contract has been executed?
No. I, I would like, personally for me, I don't know how the other Select Board members feel, but if you're negotiating something, and we sit down and talk about that in closed session, and I do mean closed session, that is an issue we can present to you and say, "Why?" or "What's happening?" And "What's the reason behind it?" Without waiting till the very end. Like, I kind of got a little upset when I was going over ratification of that contract, and I wasn't a part of it. I shouldn't have been, because I wasn't on the board then. But then I'm finding out things that got done that I would have liked to have asked questions on beforehand, before they were finally done. So not having sit on other contracts, I can't say whether I'm right or wrong, because I haven't done it. But that's my opinion of if we are the Select Board, and we have charge of the affairs of the town. The town elected us to make sure we oversaw the town. So, that's why I'm...
I think you, you will get into a challenge, I think, in terms of, if you're ongoing negotiations, oftentimes you already have a set of, for example, currently we have a, a long list of tentative agreements. I think that would undermine our position, but also wouldn't be acting in good faith in negotiating with the union if it's presented to the board in executive session. Uh, we also don't wanna drag on negotiations for a long time. Right, so, uh, we can certainly hold and wait for the next posted Select Board meeting, and I can ask for guidance. But I also wouldn't want there to be a practice of presenting something to the board, it changing, going back to the table, and I, I'm just not sure that's good faith.
So, from what Peter said, the best way, or you said too, the best way to deal with this is to give you your marching orders right up front. Delegate what we think is what we would like to see as a board.
Look, yeah, especially because I am not a subject matter expert in any of these departments. So myself, the relevant department head, oftentimes they're in those negotiations with the administrator or with whoever you've delegated, talking about some of the challenges that exist with the current contract, and then, to your point, those marching orders for the process. And then, of course, and, and this, I think I'm sure has happened in the past, if there is something that is a, a sticking point, and we need further guidance, I think that's a good venue to do that. But I, I, I would hate to have kind of a list of, "We're almost there," and then change things.
Yeah, I, I, again, I think mine would be a question of why. You know, why this thing? If we can delegate, and we know as a, not me, but as a board, whoever it is at the time, knows what they want and what they don't want to see in a contract, it's time to, like, you know...
Question I do, so this is all, so, so for example, if grant is received, and oftentimes we have to sign a contract with the state to receive such grant?
Every single contract.
Yeah, so I wouldn't...
And I was going to actually point that out when this discussion was done. It's the ball fields. You know, the least of the ball fields is a contract. The, ev- every time you're setting up a formal agreement between the town and anybody else is gonna be a contract. So every one of those contracts, this body is the only one that's all, that is directly enabled to negotiate and enter into the contracts. And there are, as I've said, quite a number of them that you would probably want to delegate anyway as a matter of course, but, but at the end of the day, it is up to the Select Board to make that decision.
One final question. Delegation, does it have to come in the form of a formal voter or bylaw or any other statute, or couldn't it be, for example, a job description?
No, it's, it is, it is, it is a collective decision of the Select Board. So it would probably come by a vote of Select Board. That's my interpretation of everything I've read.
The last cable committee contract was negotiated, now there was a former member of the Select Board on that committee, and there was also the administrative assistant from the town of Spencer. Now, I had everything I needed between those two people, okay? I had a person who knew the rules of what was going on, what we were doing, whether it was right or wrong. And I also had a former member of the Select Board in town who was able to provide further information. So in other words, it was a well, well put together committee, in my opinion. And for what we had to deal with at that particular point in time, I look at it now and say, huh, yeah, I think, I still think we did, I, I'd be, I think I have a job.
Was that committee appointed by the board?
Sorry? It's a cable advisory committee.
Okay.
Is really who he's talking about, and then they brought in.
Residents of the cable, uh, there was residents of Rutland that were appointed to the cable advisory.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, everybody that was on the committee was a resident of Rutland.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And then they also sought advice from other knowing individuals, but that was advice, they weren't voting members.
Oh, yeah, no. They were, at that point in time, I don't remember there being a residency requirement, but at any rate, everybody that was on the committee was a resident. And, um, the, the assistant, um, executive assistant to Spencer, um, is still living in Rutland. Okay.
I, does this bylaw make that town meeting article that we always have to vote on to, the town meeting has to vote on to allow Select Board to enter into contracts or, um...
That exceed, that exceed three years?
Three years, yeah.
Yes, that's, that's a separate provision of Mass General Law that requires that vote every year.
I mean, I knew that that vote was required every year currently. I wasn't sure if any of these bylaws, um, did away with that.
I don't think we can do away with that, just by this. I think we, we would, we'd need another special act of the legislature.
Okay, no, it's fine. I think, I mean, it's just one of those things that, every year there's questions about it, and so it's, that's...
Yeah.
We have the answers, it's not, but...
One of the many housekeeping articles at town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Ready to move on? Okay, so here we're gonna start to see, by the way, let me think. A is new, B, C, D are from what is today the Legal Affairs bylaw. This is what we did. We took up, we took all those duties that were spread across all the bylaws, and we tried to collect them here. So that's why we say, "Here, the board shall refer all articles in every town meeting warrant to the Finance Committee." Just make it explicit. "Board shall refer all proposed general bylaw changes to the Bylaw Committee." "Board shall refer..." Board shall refer all articles proposing capital improvements to the capital improvement planning committee, yes, that one came from CIPC, that one came from the bylaw committee. This one came from FinCom.
Remember how that one changed?
Oh, which one changed?
F.
Ah, there's.
The board shall refer all articles proposing capital improvements committee.
Right, well, the original and current CIPC says that no article should be acted upon until CIPC acts on it, so this changes this, it it's not, we actually made it earlier in the process.
I mean, I like that the way it's worded, I think that's important.
Yeah, we actually said you're not allowed to put it on the warrant until, basically it says that, you can't put on the warrant until you refer it to CIPC.
And that's what I was getting back to the earlier part where we dropped.
Yep.
Do we have to specify for E the different bylaw committees, aren't there, isn't there a planning board bylaw committee that needs to review those bylaws versus?
Except that that would not likely come through this body. It would go directly to planning board.
Okay.
And those would, so this specifically says general bylaws like these, because that is in fact the authority of the bylaw committee.
General bylaws, okay. Okay, I see, gotcha.
And we toyed with referring to planning board, but at the end of the day, we rejected it because that's just not how things work. It gets, it gets really fuzzy with zoning bylaws because of the requirement to have a hearing by the planning board. And what happens if it's on the warrant and no hearing has occurred, I don't want to think about all that. And I sure don't want to muddy up the select board bylaw background detail.
So this is not applicable to planning board bylaws?
Zoning bylaws are entirely separate.
Something separate, okay, great, thank you.
And finally, the board shall act as the town's board of public works, said board shall have all the powers defined in general laws, chapter forty one, section sixty nine D. We'll talk more about that when we get to the board of public works by law. Now let's talk about powers instead of duties. The board shall appoint a town administrator in accordance with, and you're going to see in accordance with on every one of these, because we dug up, we went through mass general law, some some positions must by mass general law be appointed by the select board. Others can be appointed by others, town administrators generally. And as we get to the town administrator by law, you'll see some more of this, but every one of these appointments is by mass general law as a duty of this and a power of the select board. And only the select board. You appoint the town administrator, you appoint town council. Uh I have a few words there, I'll talk about town accountant, fire chief, treasurer collector, veterans agent, keep going. Tax title custodian, tree warden, oh, oh, that's a mistake that has to come out. It gets really funny, thanks to board of public works, tree warden is actually appointed by the board of public works and not by the select board. Take a note.
Do we have a tree warden in town now?
Yes, well, right at this instant, probably not, because Joe Buckley was a tree warden, so.
Historically, it's been a DPW director.
So this, this is one of the places where mass general law looks and sounds conflicting. Because in the, in chapter forty one, section one oh six, it says the select board appoints the town, the tree warden. But in sixty nine C, I think it says that is now the board of public works job because tree warden is a function of public works, it's trees in the public right of way. That's all that the tree warden has responsibility for and the duty to manage. And so because it's considered part of the public way, it's part of public works. So that one's wrong, I'll go fix that, so you can appoint constables. You'd be appointing authority for non-elected committees. And you may appoint acting or interim town official. Which would usually, but not exclusively be limited to the town administrator. Based upon the other appointing authorities. But you cannot, so, I mean, looking back a little bit, you're not ready to appoint a full-time treasurer collector, but somebody's got to do the job, so you need to appoint an interim. A couple notes about all the words for for town council. We've gone round and round on this, town council didn't mind these words, so it can't be too bad, but basically our requirement is that when you are appointing a singular attorney, that that singular attorney must have, be in good standing with the bar. And when you are pointing a firm, all departments in the firm must be in good standing with the bar, all that can be verified, but we just felt like it was important, we felt, the committee felt, it was thought it was important to mention good standing with the bar. B, the board shall have the authority to suspend or remove for cause, any employee or consultant the board has the power to appoint in accordance with applicable law, accepting persons subject to collective bargaining agreement or civil service law. So if you appoint somebody and they're not civil service or bargaining agreement, you want them gone and you have cause. We don't specify the process, but it's probably an MGL anyway. Finally, the board may create, reorganize, consolidate, or abolish any agency, department, or office except as otherwise prohibited by the general laws of the town's bylaws. You want to reorganize the town structure, have at it, that's all that says. Yes, a few conditions, but that's it.
I have a question.
Yes.
For these appointments that are MGL specific, um if town wanted to say for a majority of department heads could a lot will consider these positions department heads, just for
Sure.
um that it should be town administrator, or if we were to move to a town manager through charter or whatever. Bylaws and or charter could change, would supersede MGL, is that correct?
Charter absolutely can supersede MGL, bylaws are not supposed to, which is one of the many problems that we have in the current bylaws. And and also, by the way, why we need a special act? All the special acts that we have, they all have to be done by special acts of the legislature, because that's that what's what makes them law that allows us to be in conformance, this town to be in conformance with that law, so it's in conformance with mass general law.
I have a question for you, Leah.
Yeah.
Why uh would you ask the town to take the authority away from the board to do these things?
I think.
You know, thought process?
No, I think for some of it, eh from me personally, I think I I want to try very hard to kind of depoliticize some of the the day-to-day function of town. And so I think appointing the town administrator is clearly a political appointment based on the board. Um but then, and but then that position had, could potentially have a better oversight into the entirety of the town needs and it depoliticizes some of those appointments. I'm not saying that it's right or or wrong, and just because we have some department heads who would be, could be a town administrator appointment versus a select board appointment versus, and and I I struggle a little bit, I think um sometimes as a department head, it you feel very much at the whim of the 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 board and there it creates a level of uncertainty and and job instability um in working conditions, if it it's a board appointment versus if there's a singular board appointment that then oversees the the important day-to-day functions of of government in town. That's, but that's not, I mean, I'm not pushing it one, I was just curious how it would.
See, I'm looking back over several administrators and I'm just not sure that by giving them this power, you will have an unbiased individual.
And and I.
So there's a separation of powers or duties, if you will, that I think the board should at least maintain some of them. It doesn't say anywhere on here that if the board so chooses, we could appoint somebody.
That, that in fact was going to be my next sentence, it's not explicitly here, but every power of every board can be delegated.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I guess, and I don't just, and I think in my, in my head personally, having the town administrator being a board appointment, that that really pushes the pressure on the board to make sure that 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 position is being fulfilled to the to fulfill all the duties of everything and not a a particular special interest or or whatever. Um and so I I totally understand and hear your point and so that was just some of my.
Good question, good question.
Back and forth, so.
But we do have the power to appoint across the board and delegate on anything.
Or delegate.
That's right.
Okay.
And again, right, these are, these are called out here because mass general law says the select board shall or excuse me, the board of selectmen shall, and by listing them here, it makes it very easy for the board to delegate any or all of these.
So the question is, if we hire somebody that we don't feel is doing the job, we appoint somebody, tree warden, constable
Yep.
as a board, the board has the right to remove that person.
For cause, yes.
And then the person, and then the board could say, you know what, let's try to get the TA to see if he can come up with a better choice for us, we're going to delegate it to that TA.
Absolutely.
So we got a lot of options there.
And just, just like in contracts, there's negotiation and there's entering into or accepting the contract as two different actions. You could delegate the the research, the finding of candidates, the first round of interviews to a town administrator or another body as you have done, after all, how did you find our last police chief? Wasn't there a, an external firm, we've used the external firms in the past, which is effectively you folks delegating a certain portion of the process. So you don't, you also don't have to let go to delegate the entire process that, just like contracts, is really up to you to decide how much you're willing to delegate.
So the bottom line is, we can't give our power away, but we can delegate our power. We can't give the power, total power, to appoint a constable, because that's by MGL our power, but we can delegate it away.
Yes, exactly correct, so we, I can't write a bylaw that's legal that says that that the police chief can appoint constables.
Okay.
Did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Other questions? This is something, this next section is something we put in several bylaws. Town administrator shall have voice but no vote at meetings of the select board, including executive sessions. Provided, however, that the authorization set forth herein shall not apply to executive sessions involving strategy concerning the town administrator's conduct, conduct, contract, or employment status, so if you're going to executive session on, well, DPW is my example I'm using a lot today. Town administrator has the, can absolutely have voice at every meeting. Just like of an actually elected member of the select board. We feel that is a very important attribute of the town administrator, and you'll see even more of those as we go through the rest of them. And to finish it off, the select board may suspend or remove the town administrator in accordance with the employment contract of said administrator. We had about a page and a half of process. And town council said, don't do that. Because it's always spelled out in the contract. Done. And that's the end of select board. Questions before we move on? Let me just look at my notes, make sure I haven't forgotten anything.
Um, Peter, I have, sorry, to go back to responsibilities, E, uh for proposed bylaw changes to the bylaw committee.
Yes.
I don't think currently we have a bylaw committee, is that?
You have not formed a bylaw committee yet, that is correct.
Okay, so it's been the ad hoc bylaw committee currently. Previously, there had, I mean, at some point there was a bylaw committee, correct?
No, there has not been a bylaw committee since nineteen forty one.
Well, I mean, in forty one there was.
Yes, you're right, so in forty one, there was a town meeting generated, created bylaw committee to create the bylaws in forty one, yep. Ever since then, there has not been a bylaw committee, there have been a few things that have happened. Sometimes it was referred to the planning board bylaw subcommittee. And Margaret was bound and determined that we should have a bylaw to make a bylaw committee, so we made a bylaw to make a bylaw committee.
Peter, Norm. On a scale of one to ten, if you can, what is the importance in your mind of making sure we have a bylaw committee once these bylaws get done?
It's at least an eight, it's at least an eight.
Okay.
Things change.
Yeah, things do change, yeah, and and I'm not disagreeing, I'm not trying to downplay the importance, I'm sorry, Norm, I don't want to cut you off. You speak first, you speak your mind and then I'll speak mine.
No, it's just, you know, things change, mass general laws change, they amend them, they repeal them, uh and and that sort of thing, and you know, our big problem right now is, our present bylaws are so outdated and out of touch with, you know, what's real. You know, there should be a committee that at least, and I'm just trying to think when we wrote the bylaw. Because we did put at least, I believe, some times in there, how frequently the committee has to meet, you know, like at least every two years, three years, something, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think it's meet every quarter and review the bylaws every six years. It's review the bylaws every six years, because that's two complete appointment cycles.
Oh, change is obvious, no, what what is today is not necessarily tomorrow.
As a bylaw committee, would you recommend or suggest that we start to look at the bylaw committee so that it can integrate with the ad hoc bylaw committee to get up and running by the time you're done, or what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, the fast answer is yes, I believe that there should be overlap between ad hoc and permanent, if you will. I haven't given a, any more thought than that, um so assume for a moment that we do have town meeting in February, that we do the bylaws and we're done mid-February, that I would hope that the permanent committee would have been formed. You have to be careful because we don't want to to give the impression to townspeople that we have two bodies that are responsible, that's the, that's the downside of appointing too early. For that matter, actually, let me back up, I setted the presentation weeks ago. When are we done, whenever you tell us we're done, you appoint we, we would be responsible for transferring any work in progress to a permanent bylaw committee when you appoint them.
The the reason I ask it is, there is, in my opinion, I don't care who you put on the bylaw committee, they are not going to be as skilled and as in-depth right off the bat as you are, and there's a lot to teach them that they have to know.
Sure.
And if we're doing all this work, I wouldn't want to see it go for naught, I've seen that too many times done, too many things. That if we're going to do this and we're asking the town to trust us with these laws, then we really should have something that's there to move forward, that's why I asked, what your thoughts were.
So, I, so why, Norm rated it a ten, and from one perspective, I completely agree with him. When I think about the other really important issues of the town and I weigh bylaws against a yearly budget. In my opinion, bylaws are below that, bylaws are above some of the other functions of the town. I believe they are very important, but I I cannot in good conscience say they're the singularly most important thing that the town should be worried about, they are very important, and so from a from a consistency and a management They are very important. And so from a, from a consistency and a management perspective, I agree with Norm that it's a ten. From the, from the day-to-day functions of the town, I put it very high. But I don't put it the highest it can possibly be. I think that's disingenuous to say that we're more important than, than Public Works Department doing their, doing their daily work.
Okay.
Where'd you go? There you are. Ready to move on? Oh, I already did that. We already did that. We already saw all of that. And here we come, brand-new bylaw. And because it's brand-new, it is sure to have controversy in it. The ad hoc bylaw committee has looked at a fair number of town administrator bylaws. And we've taken pieces from most of them, combined them, adjusted them quite a bit because also tried to work with, not only with what those bylaws said, but as our charter says, how the town behaves. I've looked at the behavior of Margaret and every single town administrator. I've looked at their behavior and what they've done with nothing more than their job description. And we tried to codify that as well as we could. So are there some things that are gonna be the same as we see today? Yes. Are there things that are different? Yes. And as has been pointed out more than once, some people don't agree with what has been in this bylaw. Now, those people have not reviewed it since our last set of changes, so I don't know what they think today. I've, I've actually point-blank asked people to review, but nobody's gotten back to me. So I don't know what, what's out in the ether today and how much of that is out of date with respect to what this does. Having said that, town administrator shall be a contracted employee with terms of said contract being decided by majority vote of the Select Board. Simple. Town administrator shall be duly sworn into office before exercising duties of that office. And town administrator shall hold no other elected or appointed municipal office within the town except when appointed appointments are ex officio. So what does ex officio mean? Beyond the authority of the office. So even when he's act, when he, he, I keep saying he cuz we have Austin today. When Austin goes to the Conservation Commission, he represents the town, but he represents himself. He doesn't have authority over that board cuz there's no authority there. Anyway, I think the more important words are, shall hold no other elected or appointed position.
Within the town.
Within, well, within the town, yes, that's true.
Has there been any conversation around, and I ask because I think that this has come, had come up in the past, especially because we're a regional district, that if there was an administrator that lived in one of the regional communities and was an elected school committee member? Or-
Well-
To, to one of the districts that, that Rutland partakes in specifically.
Those are not bodies of the town, and so that would not apply. Because those are set up as educational districts, which have their own laws. But the core of it is, even though the town appoints members to that body, none of them, none of those members are officials of their town. They speak on behalf of the town, but by our definition above of town official, remember that? They're not one of those people. Unless they hold another office that put, that gives them that.
So I guess maybe that comes in under contract in, con, with the contract also? I don't know.
Could be.
I just, that's-
There is that, there is always the notion of double dealing and how you manage that. Yep, absolutely.
And I just know in other communities, they were very, not even Wachuset communities, but other communities, it was very kind of, you cannot hold another elected or appointed position, period. Doesn't matter if it's the community for which you live or work. And I could see especially in, in Rutland where we have Bay Path and we have Wachuset, which are very large communities, and chances are, we have, we're going to have someone in the office that lives in a surrounding community or not. But there's a good chance that it could happen and what that was, how that was. So maybe that comes in through the contract.
It could. I know, I can only think of one off the top of my head, one Select Board member who needed to resign because she took a job in another town's government and that was a requirement, a condition of her employment.
I don't know how the town administrator would have time.
I, well.
I'm just gonna make a-
To be able to do that. God bless them.
Duties and responsibilities. Town administrator shall function as the chief administrative officer of the town. And I differentiate that from the chief executive officer. The chief executive officer is responsible for large decisions. Day-to-day decisions are the responsibility of the town administrator. Shall also be responsible to the Select Board for administration of town affairs in all matters not otherwise provided for by law. Shall be responsible for implementing all Select Board orders and policies.
Question.
Yes.
If this is a bylaw-
Yep.
Why are we including policies?
Because we are saying, we are saying explicitly that his, it is his responsibility for implementing those. That is a duty and a responsibility of the town administrator.
But not enforcing.
No, I don't think enforcement is a TA responsibility. I don't, I mean, there, there are questions about what happens with policies and what happens if you violate a policy, and that would be subject to other policies.
So like, looking down, it does say for, um, under Chief Human Resources Officer is the TA is responsible for creating and enforcing personnel policies. So-
That, would that be a standard, like a policy, for example, of, uh, uh, a policy regarding, I don't know, water shut-off or something. Uh, he, his job is to in, implement that, but not necessarily enforce it. I mean, we've got how many policies on the books, Austin? Fifty, sixty, a hundred? So, his job is to implement all those, but not necessarily enforce. Is he capable? Is he allowed to enforce those policies? I mean, he's got enough on his plate-
Yeah.
So I don't wanna make him into a police officer, but the question is, is that part of his job?
I would maintain it is not his duty to do it, as much as it would be how many policies are actually implemented through other groups? How many policies are really DPW policies that you would pass off to DPW to say, this is happening?
Well, I mean, so I, I candidly, I think that implementing, but also with the day-to-day affairs of the town administrator bylaw. For example, if the board adopts a fuel efficiency vehicle policy, I find it, I think it would be difficult for all five board members to make sure that all town officials are driving and buying and you know, so I think part of that is, is just the nature of the day-to-day. So for example, if Public Works would like to buy a new vehicle and it's not in compliance with fuel efficiency standard policy, probably it would be the town administrator too.
That would be-
If you wanna call that, enforce that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Making sure the policies are followed.
Okay. Okay.
So this next section is pretty long because we have a lot of duties under Chief, Chief Human Resources Officer of the town. Creating and enforcing personnel policies. How do we hire? How do we fire? That was too far. Evaluate personnel, or at least ensure that they are evaluated when it comes to department heads, making sure they do their job. Administering employee discipline, investigating harassment and discrimination, that all falls under policies that the TA would be responsible for. Administering dispute resolution between employees and management. These are all the things, all the day-to-day things that human resources officers are doing. So that's really all this is. Recruiting candidates, ensuring, yes.
Personnel performance evaluations are performed. Is all town employees, even though, even those that are not appointed by the town administrator? I think of the fire department, for example.
Right. So I would imagine that in that case, you would ensure that the fire chief is making sure that all of his, all of his evaluations are done. Every, every organization should have yearly review, personnel reviews. I mean, whether they're purely performance or growth or whatever the nature of the review is, those should be done every year. And so it's up to him, appoint the TA, to ensure that all the department heads are doing all of their reviews for all their employees. He doesn't do all of them, I would hope.
But then, maybe going back then to the Select Board-appointed department heads, then that would technically, if the Select Board is making those appointments, it's Select Board to do those performance reviews?
It doesn't have to be that way because appointment is the one-time action. Ongoing employment would normally be an administrative function, not an executive function, I would think.
Man, I do have questions about, especially some of those department heads that, like the town accountant that are appointed through Mass General Law.
Mm-hmm.
I do have a question about what the review process would look like. I mean, obviously, I think just in, I think in my contract, the board has an obligation.
It, this whole thing is absolutely complicated by contracts. I don't-
Yeah, which there are still some department heads that have contracts.
Absolutely. And, and I think the first problem is getting the policies written that describe all of the policies we should have for personnel management. And I don't know how many we have. I haven't looked into it. And frankly, I don't care very much in the grand scheme of things. But I would expect the policies to lay out in more detail who really needs evaluations yearly or only as they approach contracts. I don't know.
Maybe that's something Austin can recommend to the next board.
Or the current board.
I think this is, this piece is a huge undertaking because it hasn't been done, period, ever.
It hasn't, it has not been done holistically. I've seen bits and pieces of it. And, but there just hasn't been something over, you know, any policy that's, that's town of Rutland-wide that deals with it. And so, yes, it's a large undertaking to get all the policy written and managed and enforced, implemented, I should say, and managed year to year. Especially for the town department heads who've been here for a while. And it gets, and if you wanna get even fuzzier, elected officials. I think that's even fuzzier to me. So I don't know what, I, I personally don't have the head for what this will take. So, recruiting for qualified candidates and employee, ensuring personnel are appropriately compensated, ensuring employees remain properly trained for their positions, administering compensation plans approved by the Select Board, all of these things. Yes.
Ensuring employees remain properly trained for their positions in. Explain if everybody in the town is an employee and you have a department that would hire somebody, not through an appointment or whatever, but through their board, are they considered an employee that the TA now has to make sure is properly trained in their position?
Having trouble thinking of an example to, to answer your question. Because, I mean, uh, uh-
Well, seemingly, it would have something to do with the job description. In other words, you know, this person would be required to hold such and such administrative type of things or whatever, personal type of things or actually physical property management type of things and this sort of. In other words, you know, these things should be in the job description.
I agree on that perspective with you, Paul. But some boards have the ability to hire their own people. So if they do, does-
You thinking of, can you give me an example board?
Not really, I don't wanna do that here.
Okay.
But if we do the ensuring employee remain properly trained, and that's one of his tasks, does that supersede that person hiring somebody on a board or other, mostly on a board that precludes him from being able to do that to that individual, to make sure that person is brought? Yes, people need certain skill levels and so forth, but I'm trying to find out, does that mean he does have the ability to kinda go in and say, I'm gonna make sure you meet the qualification requirements?
Well, actually, that's, uh, E, that is not what E says.
Okay.
E says, let's take a fireman, firefighter. A firefighter has a commitment to ongoing education in order to keep his job. I think of it as teachers. Teachers have to take a certain amount of, I mean, teachers are a bad example because they're not town employees, but teachers have requirements to get training, and that's what this says. This is, make sure that if some, that if a job requires training or they need training to improve, that it's done. Again, this is another one of those things that is likely done through a department head, and I don't-
But I guess that's what does, the town administrator have the authority to go to the department head and say, I'd like to see your training records to make sure that everybody is remaining trained, or any other department head.
I would think so.
I would agree.
I just wanna make sure because to me, that's a very important issue for the TA, to make sure that everybody is being trained properly.
Cuz that would otherwise be a lot for one person to make sure. So you would need to just rely on your department heads just like you would for any number of other things to-
In truth, everything we've written here would, would require a human resources department, even for this town. And so, it is reasonable to expect that many of these functions are stated so that we have it stated that somebody needs to do them and that, in reality, department heads would be responsible for their own departments.
I think in some of our collective bargaining units, I'm thinking of Public Works employees specifically. The department heads manage their certifications and trainings. You think of the nature of the day-to-day work for some of our equipment, heavy equipment operators and laborers. They need hoisting licenses, CDLs, to be able to just do their day-to-day responsibilities. Those are managed through the director and informant and such. But they also, it's important that those certifications are on file and maintained because some of them receive stipends. So there's additional compensation that is reliant on-
And that's where you come in, to go to the department and say, are you up to date? Do you have that authority to make sure that these people remain properly trained?
As, I believe, as Chief Human Resources Officer, he has that authority.
Okay.
And, and so, a lot of this is also incumbent on the creation and maintenance of a personnel file and just record for all of our employees, past and present and future, perhaps, as we're recruiting people as well.
As a former EMT in the town, I know that we had to maintain a certain level-
That's right.
Of education. Continuing education units is what they were called. And you had to have so many by the end of a certain period of time in order to be recertified, okay? And I know also now that that applies to some degree to firefighters as well, so.
I guess what I'm saying is- I guess what I'm saying is, there's always an outlier and somebody could say, you don't have the authority to come here and ask me about this stuff. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, what, what I'll, what I would say about to that person is, if you have a big enough problem with it, talk to the select board. Because in truth, that department, that, that department head is appointed by the TA or by the select board, or elected. I'm going to ignore elected for now. If, if there's a problem with the department head not doing the things that are expected of a department head, I would expect the town administrator to have a friendly chat and then a not-so-friendly chat. And if it continues, that there would be a mechanism for recourse. There, there has to be, and it would be through you in that, in the, in the most extreme case of that.
Okay. You okay with that, Austin?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I, I wanted to bring up about ensuring personnel are appropriately compensated. I think that this has been a struggle for department, for town administrator since we've had a town administrator because it comes down to the battle of the budget, right? And so I think that that's a very lofty.
It's a goal.
Charge for the town administrator that is not completely and solely in the hands of the town administrator.
It, it absolutely isn't, and, and. And maybe, I don't think there's a better words with the, what I'm coming up with the top of my head, that the town administrator understands the parameters of fair market compensation for positions, which is a lot more words that say just a little more than what's there.
And I think some of this will go into, again, not to continue to rehash, but as we create the, the policies and even accurate job descriptions and opportunities for growth, you know, all of our steps and everything there as well are severely needing attention. And so, I think that some of that might fall out anyway, but I just wanted to point out that I think that that's similar to the ensuring properly trained, like properly compensated is, is maybe even more challenging because it's not solely.
Yeah, yes, there are many more factors involved than.
The, the town administrator can, can make the argument that this is what market value is and, and everything and based on, but they can't ultimately.
So should D just go away? Because you're right, the, the, the.
I think that.
The town administrator can't ensure that people are appropriately compensated. He really, at the end of the day, he can't.
But I think that it's important that the town administrator is in touch, is, is making the argument and continuing to push for fair compensation. And I don't know how to word it as such.
Maybe F is what you're looking for. Not just contracts, but total compensation plans for employees.
I view the compensation plans as the wage schedules.
That's what?
As the wage schedules that are set forth for our hourly and salaried employees. So following those or recommending and administering those plans as approved by the select board. But deciding where an employee falls on said matrix, I think should fall with agreement to the town administrator and the department.
Yeah.
What if it's, what if it's, we re, reword it something more along the lines of not ensuring they're appropriately compensated, but advocating for appropriate compensation? Because it's not necessarily, he's, he can suggest, advocate for something higher, but if it's not something that the town can do, I mean, it's.
But does that say anything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was our intent in the, I think the, the intent was simply that, okay, there's a salary schedule, there's lanes and roads and that sort of thing. He, that was to ensure that they're on the proper position.
Right, which is, which is what he said.
Which is what, yeah, which, which I understand, but if it's, that, that's set based on state, federal, whatever we need to, minimum.
Nah, the only, the only thing that says is level one, step one, that's the only one that's said in OAD. Because that's minimum wage. Everything else is scaled, most recently rescaled.
So then if that's something that we have to do anyways, I guess what is the purpose of D? If that's just.
It, it is, as I think as Austin represented, it's making sure that the positions are appropriately located in the OAD and MTP tables.
And can we just state that?
Well, back when the world was flat and we were, we were training for EMTs, we all had forty-hour week jobs besides, okay? So what we were doing was we were scrounging around to take training on weekends. And more than one time, I can remember going to St. Elizabeth's Hospital in Boston for training sessions that they would hold at least once a month. And we paid for all of that out of our own pockets. Okay, so I mean, you know, things have changed, times have changed, yes. But back when we were doing this, it was something of, of our own.
I think, Jen, you, you were hitting on something, if I might kind of just expand a little bit, is just about every bargaining agreement we have says that if somebody becomes trained here and then trains here and their skill level is here, we give them another bump in pay. I don't see that for our town employees. I don't see that. So, is there a way that by law or whatever, that we could look at appropriately compensating them based on their skill set, their skill level? If you've been here for ten years and you've just been getting your two percent raise every year and your skills have improved dramatically, that doesn't say much about how we value you.
Or your responsibilities have increased.
All right, so.
Well, yes, that's what I'm trying to tease out here, and again, this is my, probably my lack of knowledge of how this all works. But if we have the step system for however we need to pay employees based on that, but does that, is that just a minimum? Like, are we, if the town has funds, can we say this is going to be your salary above what that is because of X, Y, Z qualifications?
I, I believe that since we have levels and steps, when someone is assigned a level and a step, that is their pay rate.
Okay, so it can't be variable based on anything else?
I don't believe so, this, the, the joys of mass labor laws with respect to town employees. I am no expert in that field, I don't make it sound like I am, but I, the feeling I've gotten from talking to people is that you, you just can't because it's an equity problem. If somebody, if somebody does train to a better, higher level, that's when they get the jump in pay for that level, but it would be what's in the table and not.
Which is all fine, I just, the way I kind of was originally reading this was there could be some discretion as to, I think this person deserves more. If the town can afford it, you can give it to them, where, whereas maybe the town can't, even if he's suggesting it, I, that's what.
You think budgeting is bad now, add discretion? Add discretion to personnel rates.
Yeah, I think some of this can be cleaned up in the form of instituting or creating and then implementing personnel policies. Right now, the, the policies that exist, I think there's four.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know who mentioned it, but you're correct that there is nothing explicit that says such position upon hire can be placed upon, you know, wherever in the matrix. However, so there are, with the exception of collective bargaining agreements and contracts where there is additional compensation other than their salary, stipends and such. We can create those through policy as well. So for example, there's some communities that have some sort of educational incentive or reimbursement for, you know, so if you're attending a professional development class, we'll reimburse you up to, you know, three hundred dollars or something per class. So you can do that, and, and that would be considered additional compensation. So are, there are things that we can do that increase things. And certainly there's an equity, but that's also an incentive for other staff members to pursue professional development or education, you know, to better themselves because there's an economic incentive to that. So we could certainly do that, but you know, I think a lot, I'm, candidly, I'm fine with the way that it's phrased because I think that a lot of this can also be cleaned up and added to with policy.
Good.
So I'm going to stop here because number one, we're at Norm's last minute or two, and I wanted to switch to schedule. When's our next meeting?
So I don't know how the board, we did a Wednesday and then.
And then this Monday.
Off Monday. And I think we still have a pile to go through. And I kind of personally would like to keep some of the momentum going, but I also know we're getting into August and it's vacation and everything as well. So, do typically, I think we had talked about Wednesdays or Thursdays. Thursday, if FinCom's not meeting, Wednesdays generally, I think, are open for the most part. Peter, is that?
Wednesdays are more frequently open. I actually have commitments Thursday, two Thursdays a month already.
And then, um, the off Mondays, I know can be challenging for some of us, but that's also the. So I don't know what, how the board feels about trying to keep going. Obviously, it's a commitment from Austin and Tamika staff-wise as well.
Personally, if I may, I'd rather book it and say, I'm sorry, I got something planned, I can't show up and let the rest of the board work on it than try to figure out something when all the board can meet at the same time.
This is probably the best way because I can see conflict coming up, um, in.
For me, it'll probably be in September, but.
And so, I mean, I think, I was hopeful that we could have full board participation, but also I think if we can do an initial, in-depth first pass for everything, and then I've made notes about some things that I have questions about or that we kind of have talked about wanting to come back and maybe revisit, or as we get into additional bylaws, we can always have either at a regular board meeting, set aside some time for those more cleanups, but I feel like we're still currently in the thick of needing to meet fairly intentionally. So then, we could not post early enough for this week Wednesday.
Make a date.
Thanks, Norm.
Norm, are Wednesdays and the off Mondays gen?
In general, yeah. Yeah, I can't guarantee any particular one.
Well, I don't think any of us can guarantee, but, okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks for coming. So our next board meeting is the seventh. We could maybe look at the ninth, that would be a Wednesday. And then, the fourteenth is an off, the sixteenth. Do we want to try to keep?
Ninth and fourteenth would work for me.
I can't do the.
Because we have a regular board meeting on the seventh.
Yep.
The ninth works. What date, I'm not so sure about that.
Okay, so.
Uh, Paul, fourteenth might be our meeting. Oh, no, it's fourteenth, Monday?
Yeah, fourteenth.
Yes, and I, okay, I'm, I'm confused on my date, sorry.
I know, I just.
I might have school committee, but I don't know that I'll have to be at school committee that night. And if we can end, keep it to two hours, and oftentimes I can get there for what I would need to be at school committee for if I need to. But, um, should we look at tentatively the ninth, try to get the ninth booked for sure? Austin, are you?
I'll be here.
Did you actually?
No, no.
I'm good for the ninth, for that date for now, we'll set that one.
Yeah, the ninth is fine.
Okay.
It's a definite.
Okay.
Do we want to also try and book two weeks after that, the twenty-third?
Well, we have the six, I mean, so the ninth, we said maybe not the fourteenth, which is a Monday.
Right.
The sixteenth would be the following Wednesday after the ninth.
Right, but I've also, I thought I heard that the sixteenth wasn't.
I heard the fourteenth, but I don't know.
Oh.
Yeah, I can't do the fourteenth. I would prefer the sixteenth to the twenty-third because we have, I'm, I'm on vacation that whole week, so I was going to zoom into the twenty-first meeting.
Okay.
So I would prefer not to have to do two in the same week.
Yeah.
But that's not to say that you can't continue and I just can't.
Please, it'll put the kids to sleep.
So sixteenth is fine for me too right now.
All right, so shall.
Yeah, fifteenth works, all right.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, no. Oh, wait a minute, sixteenth, yeah, okay.
It's Wednesday.
No.
Yeah.
Sixteenth is cable.
That's what I was wondering about, okay.
Oh, sixteenth is cable.
Yep.
All right.
All right, well, let's go through the ninth for now and then.
Figure out the next one at the next meeting.
Look at schedules and maybe even have a quick conversation at the end of our meeting on the seventh to try to book out from that, but.
So seventh and the twenty-first are our normal board meetings. Is there, I don't know what, what our meetings are going to be like, but is there any way to vote a half an hour at a regular board meeting to try to get these things going if our plate isn't too full?
It's, I think it's definitely possible, but I worry that where we are currently is still in the thick of a lot that's going to have a decent amount of conversation.
Very deep discussion.
And so I would rather kind of, not that I want to hold them off, but I think that if we're going to try to stay going in order, um, and not take some of the, I want, I don't want to make any of them sound easy, but less in, intense ones.
No, I mean, keep doing what we're doing, just implement it into part of our board meeting so we can do that.
Yeah.
But I know we won't have the time to really get in depth as we're going through it, but that was just a suggestion.
Yeah. We can see what the schedule looks like for sure.
So we do for the ninth, six A P M.
Does that work, Peter?
Works for me, thanks.
Thank you, guys. Um, is there anything else for tonight? So we will meet on this, next Monday, the seventh for a regular scheduled board meeting.
And the ninth is, is for.
By law, maybe, okay. Okay, I would take a, I would entertain a motion to adjourn then if there's nothing else and make a motion to adjourn for tonight.
Second.
Second, and any further station? I'll take a roll call, Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an I.
Madger I. Waitman I, we're adjourned at eight oh seven. Thank you, Peter, thank you.
Thank you very much.